Good afternoon, everyone. We are going to get started with our board meeting. And I am going to ask Dr. Wyatt if you would kindly lead us in the pledge. And we are now at item 1.3. We want to make sure that we have a quorum established, and I believe that we do. So we will now move to 3.0. And prior to we... Oh, I'm sorry. Flipped my page. 2.0, public comments. Is it 2.1 or 2? 2.1. Public comments. The public can address the board on any item that will be approved by the board at the conclusion of our... We're not going to have a closed session. So that may be noticed, but we're not going to have a closed session. Announcements regarding action taken by the board, we will have in our open discussion.
Madam President, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I really think that the comments he were going to make will be dictated by the action that we take. So if we're going to... I think, I know me personally, are going to actually move towards closing schools. But if we're going to make that decision and have that discussion, I think we should have the discussion first on the direction we're going. Don't take action, then get comments from the public. So at least they have an idea.
And we can entertain that unless someone just wants to do it now, because we know that we've called this emergency meeting. You might have to leave, or you may, you know, be on a time constraint. But we are going to have a robust discussion today, and so... Yes, Dr. Flores?
Mr. Tillman and colleagues, I would like to hear from the public, because I would like to know what their concerns are and challenges that would guide us in terms of making our decisions.
I just didn't want to... I know that people can get real passionate if they don't think we're going to take the action they want.
Yeah, but I would like to hear from them, and then so that we know the tenor of them.
So I think we can resolve right now. I only see one public comment, one public comment item, unless Karen has more. But again, I just want to also read this before we move forward with our public comments. So again, thank you for being here. As we know, there is a public health crisis, and it's been created by the coronavirus. It's not something any of us could reasonably have expected to happen, and we are in uncharted waters as we work to prevent the spread of the illness. We have been following the guidance of the public health experts on how we can keep all who are part of our schools, community, students, staff, family members, and visitors safe in the midst of a growing health crisis. We remain committed to providing students with a safe and healthy learning environment. We are here to decide on the appropriate response to the coronavirus issue for the welfare of our students, staff, and our community. Given the World Health Organization has officially declared COVID-19 a global pandemic, and President Trump has declared a national emergency, there are a growing number of school districts in California and across the country that have chosen to close schools as a way to stop the spread of the virus. It is incumbent upon us to determine what is best for our community at this time. Though there has been no direct guidance from the San Bernardino County Department of Health to close schools at this time, to exercise a preponderance of caution, we want to hear from our staff in relation to possible next steps for our school district. So I know there is a number, a number of us as board members and as staff have received and heard from our community. We're grateful for all of our community-based organizations that have reached out to us. Again, we want to let you know that we have been diligent since the very beginning and the onset of hearing of this dreadful disease. We have been in conversations with the public health. We have been in conversations with our state and local leaders. And we have decided to make the best decision by coming together and make sure that we're talking together as a community. We know as a community, we will work together, we will get through this. But nonetheless, your leadership, we want you to trust, that we're going to be diligent, we're not going to be rash, but we're going to hear from you, and we're going to be certain that this is not about one person. This is about all of us. Because whatever decision we make is going to create an issue on the other side for someone else or something else. And we want to take into consideration those that do not work in our county, but yet they serve in our school district, have students here. We want to make sure that we hear your voice, but we want you to know, this is about making the best decision based on your seven leaders that you have here. Dr. Marsden?
Thank you, Madam President. And as you've decided, just before we hear from any public comments and before the board takes any action, Dr. Volkmar has been, as you mentioned, meeting with a number of folks throughout the county just this week. And so I'll turn it over to him in terms of staff's thoughts and recommendations, and go from there.
Thank you, Dr. Marsden. Board, before I share the recommendation of cabinet, I want to thank the team and let the audience know that we've had a group that's been working on this pretty much around the clock for quite some time now. On Tuesday, we activated our Emergency Operations Center and initiated what we call an emergency team under the leadership of Mr. Eric Vatier. And that's a group of people from various departments, various... So what is this? What do we know? And what is the best course of action for us? They have been doing a great job of keeping us informed, of gathering information. As you know, there are many, many, many resources of information out there, some that are accurate and some that are not. And so they've been vetting information constantly. They've been in contact with county public health and numerous other agencies to make sure that we have the information that we need to make an informed decision and a form of recommendation to the board. So I want to thank them. If we could give them a round of applause, they're well-deserving. And Board, I'll just make one quick comment before I move forward, and that is, to say that this issue is quickly evolving might be the understatement of the century. We had a conference call with most of the large urbans in the state yesterday, and the course of action was nowhere near where it is today. When we walked in this morning, we had a conference call with all of our management team at 9:30 this morning. And as we moved through our major messaging, steps that we've taken, communication strategies that we're using, I said, "Now, you all know that this is evolving quickly, and that what I'm sharing with you right now may be obsolete by the time the conference call is over." I really never knew that I had those abilities to predict the future, because it's changed since early this morning. And so, Board, just to kind of cut to the chase, the recommendation that staff is bringing to you today is that we do close our schools for next week, and that would head us into a two-week spring break. We would have time to reassess between now and then in terms of extending any closures beyond April 6th. That would be the day that students are due back. But that's our recommendation, and I'll share a little bit of information around that. And as you always know, you have the ability to accept, reject, or modify our recommendation. But we're basing it on these reasons. Number one, we know that we want to prevent the spread of the disease, and as we're reading and becoming informed, we know that social distancing is a term that probably no one ever thought of or knew two weeks ago, and now is just part of our normal nomenclature. And as I was walking in, I saw people greeting each other in new and unusual ways that have never been perhaps done before. And so we really see this as a way to prevent any further spread of the virus. It also gives us a chance to get in to do some deep cleaning for our schools. And we know that there's a four-day contact period, at least so far, we know that there's a four-day contact period where the virus is active. It's a chance to go in and scrub our schools and prevent anything that might be there overall. We do want to be mindful of giving you all of the information, however. And that is, one board member contacted us earlier today and asked about ADA recovery, and if we close schools, can we get the ADA? At this point, the CDE waiver process requires confirmation from the county public health department on closure. We are getting lots of different pieces of information around that there will be waivers to waivers, and that there's going to be a lot of flexibility at the state level, and then ultimately at the county level, to provide districts the resources they need. Even if, and we do not have, by the way, the San Bernardino County Department of Public Health telling us or directing us to close any schools at this time. To date, there are still no confirmed, at least, I'm looking at Eric, okay, to this minute, there are no confirmed cases of coronavirus in San Bernardino County nor in the San Bernardino City Unified School District. So in that strict definition, we would not qualify. If that were the case, and we got held to the letter of the law, we have the option of adding the days at the end of the year. So anything, any closure that we exercise between now and the end of the year, if we were not going to be eligible, and we think we will be, based on the World Health Organization's declaration that this is a pandemic, that we think we would just be able to add days at the end of the year and recoup the ADA that way. So I think we're safe. We have an escape route in that regard. And then the only other thing that we wanted to share with you as we move forward, and by the way, we're not only talking about what we do today, but there are people in the audience that have been working on this and what-if scenarios all week, in terms of food for our students, maintaining the continuity of learning and educational opportunities for our students. And so we're not completely done with that planning, but it's well underway in terms of being able to move our functions forward if we were to close schools. I want to call your attention to the document you have at your places at the dais, and it is a document by the Center for Disease Control around considerations for school closure. And if it pleases the board, you can take a couple of minutes to review that. And we think it's good information in terms of what the considerations are surrounding a decision to close schools. And so with that, I think that's our recommendation, is that at this point, we would close schools next week, heading into our regularly scheduled spring break of the following two weeks after that.
For how long total?
It would be from now until April 6th.
Three weeks.
That's three weeks.
Okay, so I'm going to start with Ms. Rosales Medina, and then we'll move forward.
Before we start, I just wanted, were we going to have the public comment first?
We were going to just kind of see if we can have a conversation. But yeah, we were gonna... We have one.
Okay.
We have... Is it two now? Okay, so another. And what I suspect also is I see people are walking in, so I think I'm just going to give a reasonable time so that people can get here.
Okay.
So we'll have more.
Okay, so then with my concerns...
We can discuss, and then...
Well, then with my concerns is that, and I do agree with the suggestion, I'm all in favor for it, we also have to be mindful for the families that are paycheck, living paycheck to paycheck, and also students who rely on our food. And so I'm glad that you're looking into that. That was my main concern when I texted you this morning, was making sure that we're also addressing that. And then in making sure that our employees are being able to, will be able to receive a paycheck as well, is that part of the plan as well?
Yeah, we're waiting to have board direction, but once the board takes action, we'll be reaching out to our union leaders to talk about, okay, where do we go from here? What does that look like? What are the conditions that exist around it? Absolutely.
And then with regarding testing, do we provide testing? Is there testing out there to check for the coronavirus?
No, I'm not sure of the answer to that question, and I don't know if Mr. Vatier would be. Ms. Rosales Medina?
I just watched a press conference from the President and other folks.
I can hear you, Danny.
Before I came here, the President of the United States was having a press conference.
I heard it.
And they discussed this very issue. So no one's going to have any more information than that, where they're going to involve CVS, and Walgreens, and Target, and Walmart. And at some point, they'll have tests available, where you can go into the parking lot. They're going to have a website on Google where you can go to that site, say where you're at in the process, and then they'll have some place for your test. It doesn't exist right now today, but that's where they're going.
Is it going to be free? Did they say if it's going to be free?
I didn't hear that they said that.
Didn't say that?
Very early.
The President says it's going to be great, and the best you ever had.
And the reason why I'm saying that is because we do have our healthcare center here within the district, and that way we're able to provide that, once they do have it, especially be prepared by the time our students come back to school, that we're looking at measures on how to test, to make sure that we're continuing to have them be safe on campus.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, I would like to also say that I am in favor of the closure, because we need to be preventative in terms of the spreading of the disease, and that we take those measures in support of our families. And saying that, I know that a lot of our parents work and don't have the means for daycare, as evidenced by our large CAPS after-school programs, and also our daycare programs and morning programs for our elementary kids. So, Dr. Volkmar, I don't know if you've looked into that or not, and what we could do to support our parents, our working parents that can't afford that service that we give them in the mornings and after-school as well. So that's one of my concerns. I don't know if you want to respond to that or not.
We've had a preliminary, just a preliminary discussion on that very issue. Depending upon the board's action this afternoon, we're going back upstairs to do some planning right after this, in terms of...
That's one of my main concerns. Another one is I've been reading a lot and getting a lot of texts from many board members from throughout the state. And Elk Grove has a drive-by pickup for food, so that we don't have to be in a big, large area. We drive by, and they pick up the food. I wonder if we could possibly look into that. I know that Corona Norco is also going to be doing that. In terms of educational services, I think they have, you know, put packets together for their kids throughout the whole district, in terms of the time that they'll be missing so the kids can do stuff. And also, we fortunately have, you know, our Chromebooks as well, so maybe we could look at tele, you know, tele-education and so forth. I also wanted to ask you a question regarding the ADA. We can retrograde it back, right, given if the governor announces... I thought he was going to announce, there's a pending announcement by the governor regarding the closure of schools. And I'm sure that in that, he would probably ensure that we would recoup our ADA. So that's really good. I hope that when he does that, I'm sure, because it says that he's been talking to many, 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 many superintendents throughout the whole state, as well as our state superintendent, Tony Thurman. Right now, I think those are my basic questions. And I just want the public to know and parents to know that their safety, and also our staff, because a lot of our staff is soldiers, especially, you know, 60 and above, that we also are concerned with your health as well, and everybody's health, and for everyone's safety. So I yield to you and to...
All right, thank you, Dr. Flores. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I imagine all of us up here are going to say similar things in regards to this very unfortunate circumstance that we're in. It's unprecedented, as we all know. I just want to say thank you again to our team, our EOC, and all of our staff for, you know, the amazing job they've been doing over the last two days, the last 48 hours, with very little rest, very little sleep. They have been on it relentlessly, nonstop, keeping in communication with us. And just thank you to our staff and our families as well. Safety is the number-one concern of our students, our families, our staff. This decision, you know, some might say, "Why didn't we make it sooner?" Well, we want to be able to receive as much information as we possibly can. As Dr. Volkmar said, and many of us up here, we're in meetings since yesterday through today. We want to have our education continued for our kids. We want them in school. We want them to continue learning and have a sense of normalcy and a continuity of education. However, as we all know, this is one of those times that we've never seen. So I am in agreement with the recommendation from our staff in regards to our closure. I won't say too much more, because I know Mr. Gallo and Mr. Tillman will as well, but to everybody out there, we need to work together. This is our community, our city, and, you know, we need to practice the highest level of great personal hygiene all over the city, wherever you may go. I know it sounds hyper vigilant, but that's what we need to do right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Mr. Gallo?
John, thank you. Harold, I wonder if it might be beneficial if you could review our communications protocols for communicating with parents, with our staff. You know, I know we've rolled out another app and things for communications. Are we... Can you review our standard communications approaches? I'm sure we're going to continue that.
Actually, it would be beneficial for me to do it, but it would be much more accurate if Linda Bardeir did it. And so I turn it over to Linda, who has been hard at work in terms of communication. And I will say, these are hard things to get a hold of. I mean, literally, information is, you know, ahead of you before you can even read the information, and the next generation of information is out there. And so Linda and her team have done a terrific job of trying to stay ahead of it, get people the information they need, and so I'll turn it over to Linda. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmar, and thank you to the board for your constant support. So we have continued to push with our parents to take advantage of the district's free app and download that so that they can get instant notifications as quickly as possible. We will continue to send robo-calls. We had a robo-call that went out yesterday. We've also, at this point, sent two parent letters that went home with students through Peachjar, and then today, some schools might be sending home the letter that was sent out yesterday, and that was only available electronically. We've provided our school front offices with telephone scripts so that they can respond to parents who call with questions and needing clarification on the status, so we'll continue to update that. We've been promoting on our district's social media just good health guidelines for staying healthy for our students. Thanks to Eric Vatier, Emergency Operations, they have a fantastic website. And we have some current information, stats and data is at the top, and at the bottom we have communication that's been sent out. We've also asked all district managers to make sure they have set in place ways to communicate with their employees and their staff after school hours. So again, using tools like Remind 101, GroupMe, and making sure their employees have the app. So that's the multimedia approach we are taking to communicate with our families and our employees and the community.
Great, thank you.
All right. Mr. Tillman?
I think it's important that we all remember that the action we're taking is to try to keep as many people healthy as possible and prevent as much death as possible. With that being said, there's going to be stress and pain associated with our decision. I know that I was on a phone call earlier with people at the county of San Bernardino, and they asked me on the direction that the board was going to go in terms of school, because if we shut down schools, then you have employees that work for the county that now have to make adjustments in order to stay home with those, their children. So it's going to put a strain on a lot of people, and because it's not one person that can control all this, it's going to... We're interdependent, and what we do is going to affect other people. Even in terms of, when we have the discussion that we're going to agree with not having school for three weeks, but you still want to have students get fed, well, that means you're going to have to decide which employees are essential employees, which employees are still going to come to work. Because if we could, we would say no employees come to work, but there are things that still have to get taken care of, so I don't think that's going to be possible. We're going to have to decide that there are employees that are going to continue to work, because certain functions have to get done for a number of different areas. I also don't want to forget our partners, like for instance, the CAPS program. You have people working in CAPS who depend solely on their paychecks from the school district, the funding from the school district. So I'm assuming that we're going to continue to pay those agencies so that their employees can get paid. I don't know how that's going to work, but that has to be a discussion, because you're talking about, if you're talking about not allowing people to work for three weeks, that's tough for people to sustain their livelihood if we do that. So that's something that we should also look at. So I hear the proposal being three weeks, and I think that's three weeks based on, we think the need right now is three weeks. It may turn out that the need is more, or it may turn out that as numbers come in, that the need is less. The problem that everyone agrees is, agrees to is, that there haven't been enough tests, so we don't really know who has the virus and who doesn't. I know personally of someone who was in Las Vegas for the lady who got tested positive. They live here in San Bernardino. They've come back, they've gotten sick, they've called and requested a test, but they haven't been tested yet. But they have the symptoms, and they got a letter from the hotel in Las Vegas that said, "You were in close proximity with someone who has tested positive." So there aren't, there have not been enough tests. So in reality, we don't know who does and who does not have the virus. And I think that's the way we need to continue to operate. So in closing, I just think, I agree that we should close for the three weeks, but I think it's going to be imperative that we decide who the essential staff is also and pay that.
And I believe Dr. Flores had mentioned that as well with regarding employees. But my thing is also, it's for the students whose parents are working. And mind you, we have five-year-olds, we have six-year-olds, seven-year-olds. What's going to happen when they're home alone? There's many families that are working full-time jobs, so we have to look at ways, and maybe it could be through the CAPS program, but for those that are, that they have no other choice but send their kids to school, so we should look at alternatives at the same time.
But the question becomes, there are employees who don't want the exposure also.
Yes.
Well, the thought is, if the students are at home, then for instance, the county is going to hopefully do something where they say, "You don't have to come to work, you can stay home to take care of your children." I don't think we're going to look at ourselves as being the agency that's going to take care of all the issues. There are going to be issues associated with this, so I just want to make sure we be as fair as possible.
And we send a letter to the state as well, saying that we also want paid family leave, so that way those families who have their children in school districts like ours or throughout the state, that they're able to take the time off. I mean, there has to be something that we're able to do to help the families that don't have no other options, either to not work, not get paid, or have their children stay home alone. And these are children, small children.
That's going to be part of, I'm sure, our next steps, and what we get with our legislators after we make our decision. Board, we've had a pretty good conversation thus far. I think my public comments are getting a little antsy and ready to come up, so I'm going to yield it over to our public comments now.
Thank you, Madam President. Board, welcome. Ms. Ashley Biedasalkala, President of our Teachers Association.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Marsden, President Rogers, members of the board and Cabinet.
Good afternoon.
I'm Ashley Biedasalkala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. And I would just like to echo your conversation about the tough decision to consider closing our schools. We believe that now is the time to close our schools in order to protect the health of students, staff, and the broader community. We call on the county also and state health officials to allow the San Bernardino City Unified School District to temporarily cease its regular operations. As educators, we understand the connection between health and well-being of our students, and the health and well-being of our families, and also our community. The scientific facts are very clear. The best way to protect our community that we serve is to limit our opportunities for the virus to spread. Closing schools would be an important step to protect our families, our students, and their families, and their community from COVID-19. Now is the time to be proactive and not reactive. We shouldn't have to wait for a member of our community to test positive for this virus before we close our schools. One positive result is one too many, and it is a fact that many of our students depend on our schools for so much, including, as you've talked about, their regular meals. Our families and our community will also face lost income from this growing crisis as well. As we respond to this pandemic, we must ensure that there is access to food for our students who depend on our school system for their basic nutrition. And we also call on the state, county, city, and school leadership to set up distribution systems for our students to access this food. The only way... The only way to keep our communities safe, and our students and our staff, is for the county and state to act now. So I applaud you for having this meeting, and I hope that we can move forward with closure, and I hope that the state moves forward with some action as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board welcomes Mr. Tim Prince. Good evening and welcome, or good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Marsden, ladies and gentlemen.
Can you get closer?
Microphone, you almost have to eat it, so sorry.
Problem. I'm a product of your fine schools, and California at Berkeley, and practice law in this community for 30 years, and I have two children currently attending. Good leadership requires attention to timing, attention to separate fact from hysteria. Real time from your San Bernardino County Department of Public Health, I'll go to their website, I check it at least once, usually more than once per day, is that they are recommending no special precautions, that we should go on our routine because the risk in San Bernardino County is very low. We're not Santa Clara. We are the 13th largest state, if we were a state. There is not one of our 2 million residents with a documented case of coronavirus. Does that mean we shouldn't be prepared? Of course not. What you should be talking about today is just that, encouraging hand washing, encouraging sanitizing your, your school desk and your areas, and there are a lot of things that can be done. Matter of fact, it'll be just as hard to get people prepared as it would be to disclose everything today. We are not a wealthy community. The economic impacts in this community would be devastating compared to Santa Clara. I would not be standing, making this pitch to you if we were in Santa Clara. I agree, there are counties that are there, counties that need immediate action. We are fortunate that we are not that county. We are the very top on the statistics. President Trump doesn't listen to science. I know all of you listen to science. Listen to your Department of Public Health when they say, "No special action is required now." Get ready, it might be next week, it might be the week after, you might have to have another emergency meeting, but not now. What happens if you do it now? All of those economic impacts take effect. Single parents that have to now be responsible for their children, the childrens that won't get access to meals, just like a lot of them don't find meals in the summer. Think of the impact on business if every public body like yours takes this precipitous, premature action in San Bernardino County. We're not in the same position as wealthy counties. Please don't do this without the scientific basis in current, real time, because we have a limited capacity economically to respond to this type of a crisis. And if you do it too soon, the public will be tired. Two weeks from now, if you've already closed, and we finally get our first case, two weeks from now, then it's 100 cases, and then it's 1,000 cases, and then it's really serious, you've already crippled us. Don't do this today. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Board welcomes Mr. Sergio Luna.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for holding this special meeting and for your dedication, for everyone in the school district, for your full commitment. I'm here speaking on behalf of the community organization that's taking place in the background. So there are different conversations about how would school districts be able to get some of the funds that might be lost in the, in the case of closing schools, right? Like, how would us as the community be advocating for funds to be brought back to the schools? But one of the things that I think is really critical here in our community is that many of our community residents do not have access to affordable healthcare, and many of them do not have any at all. So having just one case in San Bernardino, in the city of San Bernardino, of course, will have like a tremendous impact on all of our communities because we are so interconnected. Even though in LA, San Diego, they're having some cases in some of the counties, many of our community members drive up to LA, they drive back to San, from San Diego, Orange County, because they, we don't have the local jobs here. Many of our parents who do have work in the construction area and some other different types of work that they do, they do travel to those areas that are currently being told to basically take extra precautions, right? So in our city of San Bernardino, we know there's going to be different entities, different, different impacts, right? But the less of, the less of an exposure we have with our students, and also with our staff and our teachers and our community members, I think would be the best, best option you can take. I know the state, the, there was conversations that the governor's going to make a statement to close schools on Monday, and they said it was probably going to come out later on today. So I don't know if that's happening as we speak, or if it's going to happen later on today, but that's a conversation that's taking place across the state. So one of the things that, just, just to keep considering it, either the state is going to pull the plug and we're not ready by then, or we can start taking the right steps towards that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. And Madam President, those are all our public comments.
Thank you. Okay, so board, are there any other comments?
I just go back to the statement with regards to the families. And I appreciate Tim mentioning the, the families out there, there, that are living on a single income, or those that are both working, barely making ends meet. And so then we have to, if part of this discussion is to close a school, we have to make sure that we're finding ways to ensure that we're providing some sort of classroom environment. I'm not sure how that, what that would look like, what are other school districts doing? And as, as hard as it may be, we need to also provide avenues or supports for, for food. I mean, many of these children, that's the only meal they'll have for the day. So we have to be mindful of what the consequence of us closing the school will also entail is loss of income, possible losing even their homes, because with two, two weeks of no work, you may not have enough to pay for rent. So we have to be mindful, but I also understand the fact that many of our families do not have healthcare. And if we're not able to get them tested to begin with in the school district, how will we know to protect them? And then if, let's just say that they do become infected, what, what are the options for them to get help as well? And so we're putting them at risk if we don't close down, but at the same time, what are we doing to protect the families that are also at risk of losing income and possibly losing their, their homes? Unless we provide some additional measures for that.
Dr. Flores?
I just wanted to clarify, we're actually closing the school for one week because we have a two-week spring break. So we're adding only one week as closure that was not planned for. And so that's really important for everybody to know. And I do appreciate all the comments that everyone made. And, you know, it's uncharted waters, like President Rogers said, and, you know, we have to stick together. I take my granddaughter to school, and I had NPR on, and she said, "Nana, you're coughing. Are you, do you have that disease? Do you have the, the virus?" I said, "No, Mihai, I, I, you have to have a fever. I don't have all the symptoms. Am I going to get it?" She's six years old. And so we also have to, if we could, Linda, or, you know, how do we share with our kids? How do we talk to them? How do we, you know, yes, let them know the severity of what's happening, but also so that they're clear about it? And she also said that they're washing their hands a lot in her classroom, which is very good. And so I think that, I just wanted to clarify that for everyone so that we know that. But I, I think about our, our kids, our children, our middle school, our high school kids that depend on these meals daily. I mean, how, I mean, how are we going to, that's my question. How are we, are we going to have many ways of distributing food? Is there just going to be one way? I hope not. But they're going to have to have access to the food. And like you said, Danny, which essential workers are we going to have? Now, are our businesses also, I don't know what types, all different kinds of businesses, but in terms of the state and county offices, can our workers work from home on certain things? I mean, we have to think about it and work together as a community to really confront this and be prepared. Be prepared if it continues longer than what we think. This is just preventative right now for us to move forward. And I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Dr. Wyatt? Mr. Tillman? I'm sorry.
No. And to Dr. Flores, thanks for the clarification that we're only asking for one week because we're going to be off two weeks anyway. And for me, and, and great comments, Tim, for me, the, the decision is easy. The, the governor has already stated that to cancel all events that have 250 people or more. They've closed down the Pantazas, the Disneyland, all these different events, out of caution based on information they received from the experts. So the only reason why we would continue to have school and have people close to each other is because of the reason we talk about terms of money. To me, I, I don't want to take the risk that because I left schools open this coming week, someone got infected and died because of it. I, 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 I'm not willing to take that risk. I, I will say this, I know for a fact, just because I got off the phone with other county executives before I came into this meeting, the county itself is making decisions as we speak. So even information that we received from the county's public health, Trudy Ramundo a few days ago, that's old information. People are making decisions based on what we have here today. And this is brand new to everyone. And, and in the end, this board gets elected to make these tough decisions. And I think the decision we're making today is the right decision to close the schools starting Monday, and, and try to find ways to feed the students. We have systems in place where students get fed when we're off, when we're not in school. We can use those same type of systems. I, I think it's imperative to make sure that we are finding ways to sanitize, clean, and keep employees safe. And Dr. Volkmer, you, you said that while we're out for this period of time, we'll go in and try to clean schools, right? And sanitize the schools, is that right?
I'm training on it. They'll be, they'll be cleaning the school sites. Mr. Precy will be working with staff on that. Food service, at this point, we talked about keeping the cafeteria serving open at every school for breakfast and lunch next week. We're going to finalize those plans. And so those are staff that are required to be on site.
And then the...
And I wasn't saying to close the schools, I'm just looking at alternatives for those families that are in different situations that need some type of support.
And, and I agree.
I also wanted to comment, even our kids that are bused...
I'm not finished yet.
Is that done yet?
I'm sorry.
But I, I agree, but we, like I said in the beginning, the whole goal of this is to save people's lives, but there are going to be consequences associated with doing that. We, we're not going to be able to mitigate all those circumstances. And, and I, and one last question. I know we have even employees that go to houses to educate students. What are we proposing for those employees?
Oh, that was actually a question that came up at our conference call this morning. When we were talking about continuity of learning, that, that service would continue, that service would be discontinued at this point, only because we're closing that, closing all of our educational services, that would be closed as well.
And, and just to be clear, during this process, all staff will be paid?
That's correct. What we will need to work out is what will they be doing during that time? It doesn't mean that we're extending spring break for all of our employees for an additional week. There's, there's many things that everybody can be doing. There's always work to be done. We'll have to work that out with our union leaders.
And just to be clear, so after this, if we, if we, we find out that the state has determined that they're not going to pay us for the time we took off, we'd have to add a week of education to the end of this school year. I think it's well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo? Good? Okay, I believe we received, oh, Dr. Flores?
I just wanted to say, for our kids that are bused to different schools, that they have access to the distribution of food to the nearest school that they live by. I think that would be important. I just thought of that when Danny was talking, that, you know, they're going to say, "Oh, we can't go to our, our regular school," but so that they could walk to the, the nearest school.
Homeschool. And any student under 18 years of age, we can serve them the meal.
Right. That would be great. Okay, thank you.
Our public speaker?
Thank you. Board, board welcomes Mr. Tom Dolan. Good evening, Mr. Dolan. Afternoon, excuse me. Habit.
My name is Tom Dolan. Most of you have ears. A parent here.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you. My name is Tom Dolan. I know many of you that are you friends and companions in efforts to improve outcomes for our families, our students. And I'm here with my daughter, Guadalupe, who's a freshman at Pacific High School. I have two more children who go to school here, they're home, and they have been. Three days. Was taught going to make error, error on the side of caution. I am not panicking. I am passionate, I always have been. And I try to, to be as smart and informed as I can, and I count on all of your support to make me smarter and more informed, and you've done that for me many years. I believe we need to close the schools on Monday out of an effort to, to be very, very cautious, stop this potential spread of the virus. I know the county health director has not, has, has said that there is no virus evidence in the county, but I also know that a high percentage of the families in San Bernardino travel daily out of the, out of San Bernardino into LA County, Orange County, and other areas. They're coming back and forth, and they're passing through areas where this virus is present. I also know that there is no testing going on because we don't have materials to do the testing. Though it is possible that the virus is present, knowing that, I think we need to close the schools for this week. I'm very unders, I know the kids are on vacation because, are my kids, and so many others that we work with. And I think we need to do this, and I'm very clear, and I've spoken with several board members over the last days, that there's, this is not a simple issue. I understand that. There's children that have, as you know, all of the complexities, we have to deal with that. We have to, and we will. And you will have the support of our congregations, our parents, and our students, as you always have, to learn together. How do we do this? How do we support homeless families, students who are in need, undocumented students, et cetera? We, we have to figure this out together, but we're fortunate, because LA Unified is going through this right now. There's dozens and dozens of districts that are going through this. We need to learn together how to do this. I was with, in a meeting yesterday with Dr. Ross, the director of the largest foundation, the California Endowment, and he, his statement was, "We're in a new time now, and we will be for several months, and we need to learn how to do things differently." So this is an important time for us to... So this is an important time for us to come together and learn how to do this, to support our families, to avoid a potential calamity where families are getting sick. We know the hospitals don't have, they're not equipped to deal with that. So we need to be bold in our leadership, and I know you will be, and I, you have our commitment. Our congregations, our, had a meeting, clergy from across the state with the governor's office yesterday, and they also are starting to close congregations, reduce, tell people not to go to the congregations in the city of San Bernardino, because that's also a potential threat for the spread of undiagnosed concerns. We're erring on the side of caution, and we need to take a risk. That's what leaders do. It's one week we're going to add on, and we're taking a risk. I'm also, I've been informed that the governor is about to make an announcement that all schools will be closed in the state. I heard that this morning from our director in Sacramento, who was on a call with the governor's office. I'm not sure, but it's quite likely that we either lead, or we're just going to get dragged into this by someone else. I know we're all leaders here, so I thank you for your leadership. Again, count on us if we can help in any way. We're all in this together.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Or those are all our public comments?
All right, thank you so much. And again, we want to thank the community and everyone that has come out this afternoon to weigh in on this very, very hard decision that we, as the board, are hearing from you and knowing that the days coming ahead, we don't know what to expect, but we do want to be prepared. And I believe that the district has taken a lead in doing that, as I said earlier, for those of you that just, you know, might have come in later. The district didn't just start making decisions and communicating with us as a board today. We have been in quite constant communication, daily, hourly, you know, on this situation. And as I said before, things are changing and probably changing as we speak right now. But what's important is what we have control of over is to make the right decision, what is best for San Bernardino City Unified as others attempt to do what they need to do for their particular areas. We also know that other districts are already on spring break, or this is their last day, and so they'll have to make some different decisions later on. But I do want to emphasize what we did say. Again, this is a cautious week, that we're saying if we lead into that, that is what it's really narrowing down, and no one wants to have to bear the bad news of what we could have done and what we should have done based on the information that we've received so far. I do want to update you on what the governor, it was spoken about earlier, the governor's executive order that was issued in reference to COVID-19 had this, and I want to encourage everyone, go to the reputable sites, our command team with Eric Bateer, we are linked in to real-time public health, CDC, all of the updated information as it comes in. But this, for example, is from the executive order yesterday. State efforts to assist California workers. And it speaks, the language in here is for those that have been affected. It goes on to speak about those being unable to work because you're being, you're caring for someone, or you are now off work, or you're quarantined, or you have a family member, or you are unable to do your usual job, that there are provisions that are put in if you go to the website to see your eligibility. So there's already language out to support what we're talking about today. But you have to visit those websites so you know where you are, and this is public information because that came from his executive order.
What website is that?
So if you go to ca.gov/coronavirus2019, and the whole entire executive order is there, but there's particular language, state efforts to assist California workers.
Can I make a motion, Madam President? Can I make a motion?
Yes, and so, okay, but you can.
Thank you, Madam President. And just for clarification, you know, two of our three weeks that we're looking at being off are spring break, and I don't know if I did hear it or not hear it, but will we be providing meals during those two weeks as well? That's a normal spring break, and do we normally do that? So, I mean, just in this time, it's kind of a, this is different, you know, incident, so I'm just wondering.
We, I'm looking at Adrian, who is out there, but we do not normally provide meals during spring break.
I didn't think we did. That's why I wanted to make sure our public was aware of that and knew that. So the meals will only be available next week. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Will be.
Will be.
Okay, for next week.
But they will not.
During spring break.
Right. The normal spring break, it will not.
And then what about, are we going to have an opportunity, because this is going to be really short notice, will they be able to still, for those that are in dire need of still attending school, is there an option? Will there be an option?
Board, if you, if you take the action to close the schools, we will not have school at school. What we're looking at is alternatives that are online packets, et cetera, et cetera, that can occur away from school buildings. So there will not be a school to come to, is what I hear you saying, Mrs. Rosales Medina.
Right. So, Board, I believe we've had a pretty good discussion, so I'm going to ask Mr. Prince.
On to one point. Why don't you revisit this issue in two weeks while the staff puts other measures in place for next week? Because I think what you're not thinking of is what's going to happen two weeks from now when there's 50 and 100 or more cases in San Bernardino County, and then it's adding on a week, and then another week, and then another week? You've wasted one of your weeks now. There's no way a child is going to have a significant risk, according to our top local health authority, next week. So you're wasting a week, and I know that you're all aware of the hardships that that causes. So it may feel good to do it now, and as much as I respect my friend, Mr. Dolan, his comments were generic, that would be said in every of the 55 counties of the state. We are not in the same position. Governor treated us the same during the drought. They always treat us like a stepchild. We're not the same. We're the largest county, and we're not the same. Save this week. You're going to need it. Eaters are made during crises. You jump the gun, people are fatigued and tired and poor and unable, and businesses are struggling three weeks from now, four weeks from now. This could be a long fight, folks. You're not going to save one life next week. You're not even going to save one illness. Chances in America right now, the comments about going to LA County and visiting a friend in LA County, okay, your chances are .0012 to visit somebody in the hottest zone of California that they're going to have coronavirus. It's not, the big events in LA are canceled, so you're not going to go to LA and go to an event and get it and come home. It's not a significant risk. Got to trust the facts and the authorities, not make it up on the fly. Timing. Save your week. You're going to need it after spring break.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina.
I was wondering, is there a way to move the spring break, starting as of next week, two weeks, and then have the discussion in that time to see what the next steps would be? So that way, we can still have the spring break, have that part of the process, and then during that time, we have these conversations to look at the third week?
That's a, that's a great question. I'm just, I'm thinking it through. All of that time is negotiable, so we'd have to have our unions' agreements with that in terms of those breaks. We would essentially be off next week and the following week, if I, what I hear you saying correctly, Mrs. Rosales Medina.
Right, and so move it up to next week and then...
Then we would make a decision to come back the week after that.
Right, typically after two weeks, and then, but during that time, we'll have enough time to do our research, investigate, and see what we need to do. Also, making sure that we have testing kits in the meantime, making sure that we're being fully prepared by then.
I think you've got people that have made, I'm sure there are quite a few people who have made, although they may have canceled.
Oh, well, for trips, yeah.
Vacation plans, et cetera, et cetera.
Any people have already, I've been canceled yesterday.
I don't know, I don't know what our workforce would be. We can certainly examine that. And I think it's, would be an accounting question, and I don't want to, you know, devalue our relationships with our unions. We would have to come to the table with them and say, what do you think? How might this work?
But I, the thing is, if we're going to make a decision now, I think that that would be my, my motion is to move the two, spring break earlier and start it as next week for the two weeks, and then use that time to disinfect, use that time to really think about what we're going to do after those two weeks.
But, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Tillman?
There is no way of doing that. I mean, legally, legally speaking, we agreed to a school calendar. We vote on the calendar. The unions come in and negotiate days off and time off. You can't, on your own, just say we're going to disregard that contract.
But we're in a different situation now.
And, Madam President?
Yes.
Therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we...
I made a motion first.
I didn't hear the motion.
I, I motioned to move the spring break two weeks earlier, I mean, two, the week earlier.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There's no second, a motion, motion dies.
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to cancel school for next week.
Would be the date's March 16th.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion.
I second it.
Okay. There's a motion, and there's a second?
And for Dr. Scott, what are the dates?
March 16th through March 20th.
Thank you.
All right, is there a discussion? I think you had something, Dr. Wyatt?
Well, it was in just regards to Ms. Medina and her comment about the spring break. I tried that as well with county schools, just so you know.
But you did.
I asked the same question.
And we went forward.
I was told no, but I thought it was a great idea as well. I just wanted you to know that, and it makes sense to us, but when we talk to our business side and folks, you know, collective bargaining, when it comes into play, there's a lot of moving pieces, as we know. I was hoping to do the same thing. I do appreciate the idea that you came up with.
Madam President, I also appreciate your recommendation, given all of the contractual agreements and the timing and so forth. I also appreciate Mr. Prince's comments as well. Fact that we don't know that there are any coronavirus is because we haven't been tested. And so there's probably people walking around with it, and we don't know it. And so I would like to decide on the side of caution and prevention in terms of keeping our kids, our families, our communities safe. I mean, germs do not discriminate, you know, at all, and we don't know where they are, what they are, and so forth. So it's better for us to be safe, and if we do have to go, you know, for more weeks, then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it and decide what we have to do as a community. I did read that our congregations, our Catholic congregations and probably other congregations are eliminating, you know, Sunday and Saturday services for the next three to four weeks, just for, you know, keeping the 250 minimum, and even that, they don't even want to have 250. Because just think of what my granddaughter said. You coughed. You're coughing. You have it? So every little cough or sneeze, it's very volatile in terms of, of, you know, spreading. So we just have to be cautious. Thank you.
Mr. Cala?
This is just an interesting time, isn't it? I mean, fear can cause people to do lots of different things and take, you know, precautions and all of the, I mean, we can explain it away this way. But I challenge us not to be hysterical about things either. Don't be afraid to live your lives and live in fear, because if you do, you wouldn't walk out of your home regardless of whether we close schools or open them. That being said, when I came here today, I was really just prepared to, you know, enact some preventative measures like daily wipe downs of furniture and surfaces in our schools, implementing, you know, hand sanitizers in every classroom, things like this that would be preventative measures, incorporate instructional practices in each of our health classes and social science classes, et cetera. That was, that was kind of where my mind was going on this, because, but I'll tell you, when people are afraid and people get fearful, national decision-making isn't, doesn't always rule the day. And that is, regardless, people are fearful, and no matter what we say, you can't allay those fears, you know? And so this is the consternation we're in here. And, you know, I think, and I appreciate Abigail's comments as well, excellent idea, and I agree about our families, how do we minimize economic impact? Because I got to tell you, my personal thoughts are, we're going to, the economic impacts of this is going to far outweigh the virus impacts, in my mind, anyway. And, you know, when you looked at H1N1, and many of you may not even remember those days back in 2009, 2010 timeframe, nobody even knew about it. We lost 12,000 people. 60 million Americans had the virus, and, you know, 400,000 people in the United States were hospitalized. So, you know, and nobody even remembers it. But we are where we are today. This is a one-week closure. We want to try to mitigate any of the risks. I think the negative impacts to our families, and, you know, I sort of think of childcare. I don't know that we've addressed that part yet. We really haven't. I don't know what we're going to do about it.
That's what I was referring to, though.
I get it.
That's part of what I, but that's, that's part of what the governor has talked about.
You know, do we, do we maybe offer one facility that stays open on a volunteer basis? And if you have no other place, do we offer something? Ian, and again, these can be, I'm going to have to kind of work this stuff as, you know, as we're, as we're thinking through this. Is this a big deal? It might be worth, you know, asking our families in some kind of, you know, public announcement or something, those of you who are struggling with that childcare issue, can you contact us? And we could figure out how we could work with county, yeah, with county officials, maybe ourselves, and maybe we could do something. But, you know, I, I know this is a difficult decision, and you hate to play into the hysteria and fear, you know, which is kind of how I feel like we're doing. We're almost supporting that hysteria and fear by doing it. But the last thing I want to do is come to you and say, one of our students, you know, just suffered, and their dad, mom, grandpa died because of it. Or I, you know, so that's, and nobody wants that either, you know, of course. And so I think, you know, with our mindset of trying to mitigate the negative impacts of this, you know, I would, oh, sweet.
All right.
Just do it.
Thank you.
Can that be added to the motion, though, as well, just to ensure that we do look at that for next week, for those families that are in those dire needs, that they need someone to...
I think, I think we, yeah, as the motion is going to give the district the next, the level to move forward, because we have to make a decision and to give them, you know, the, you know, the authority to move forward, and so that's why we have to take a vote. And then from there, we don't know what it's going to look like. There's a lot of different things, and I'm, I know that we'll be in conversation with our local leaders. I mean, there's many, many layers, but we're here. We need to take the vote so that we can empower them with what they need to do. So having said that, we're... So having said that, we're going to move forward with a vote. It's going to be a vote verbal, all right? We'll start with Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All are in favor, so motion. I don't, yeah, I don't think so. All right, so it looks like the motion carried forward, and we will continue to keep our community abreast. Please go to our website. You will know what our next steps are. Again, as we said, we do not take this decision lightly. This is not about mass hysteria. This is about the job you have empowered us to do for our students, for our staff, and for our community. So thank you. Thank you so much, and we are, we're going to, we're going to...
We have to do an emergency declaration?
Are we going to close or not? Are we just going to do the, we're going to do it now? All right. So let me now move to 5.2. This is approval of the emergency declaration COVID-19. Is there a... All right, so the recommended action is approval and resolution declaring emergency conditions exist at San Bernardino City Schools and offices and authorizations to take any and all necessary actions to prepare and respond effectively to the novel coronavirus COVID-19. Is there a motion?
Moved, second.
It's been moved and properly second.
Madam Secretary, I mean, Madam President, are we not going to read it?
You, you all, I can read the entire, I was going to read the therefore be it resolved portion because it will be available.
Can you read it?
One portion? That's the part I will read.
Okay.
I'll read that at the end. Okay, so it's been moved properly second. Let's vote. Verbal. Abigail, Medina?
Yes. I, yes.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, San Bernardino City District, determines that the circumstances described in the resolution herein constitute an emergency condition. By unanimous vote pursuant to Section 20113 of the Public Contract Code and subject to approval by the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, authorizes the execution of contracts without advertising or inviting bids, and notwithstanding Section 2114, authorizes the flexibility of MNO and purchasing, notwithstanding Section 20114, to respond to the emergency conditions at district sites, and authorizes the superintendent and/or his designee to take any and all actions necessary to ensure the continuation of public education and the health and safety of the students and staff at the district sites, including, but not limited to, the relocation of students and staff, continued daily student transportation provisions of alternative education program options, provisions of leave of absence to employees with pay to quarantine or recently returning from Level 3 countries or sick from COVID-19, or illnesses with similar symptoms, cough, fever, shortness of breath, or cohabitants of any individuals without any impact to their benefit time pursuant to Education Code Sections 44964 and 45199, directing staff to serve as disaster service workers pursuant to Government Code 3100, and/or make alterations, repairs, or improvement to school property. Thank you. At this time, if there's no other business in order?
Is there, I just want to make sure that those in audience that are watching it from home or those that end up watching it later, what will be the next steps if they do have those situations where they don't, they don't want to leave their five-year-old at home by themselves? What are the next steps? So, or who do they contact? Or where do we direct them to?
So I would ask them to call the principal of their school as an immediate contact point. And then that person will convey that up to, we'll have to determine where that's going to centralize. But I think the point of contact, probably that they would be most familiar with, is the principal.
Just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.